Good evening. I would like to call October 29th, 2018 Belbrook City Council meeting to order would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We did have a work session this evening. We had a budget review and an Ministry of Service Department. Every year we go over all three budgets and we spend about an hour, and this is one of our first three work sessions that we will be going over budgets. We are waiting for our city manager and our clerk, who will be here in a second, who asked to actually call the, I guess we could do it.
You can do it.
Can I do it?
Yeah.
Sure. Okay. First, roll call. Mr. Edwards.
Here.
Mr. Greenwood.
Here.
Mr. McGill.
Here.
Mrs. Middlester.
Here.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schweller.
Here.
Mayor Baird, I'm here.
(laughing).
Form approval of the minutes of our regular meeting minutes of October 8th, 2018. Does any member on council have any corrections or additions of the regular city council meeting minutes of our last meeting?
None.
Seeing none, they are approved as written. Mayor's announcements. We have a couple items on the agenda this evening, and we will start with Mr. Jeff Brock from Green Memorial Hospital. Thank you very much for coming out, Jeff.
Thank you, Mayor.
And everything you've done for the community. We've had a number of nice events at the hospital through the foundation, some other things. So, thank you very much and give us a nice update.
You're very welcome. Happy to support you down here in Belbrook. I think you should have distributed amongst the council members a report that refers to both Green Memorial Hospital and Soyn Medical Center. So, I'll take just a few minutes to talk through a few of the highlights in that report. I won't read it word for word, but I thank you for the opportunity to share about the hospitals. We call these your hospitals here in Green County, and we are all about being collaborative and think it important to come to our communities every so often to give you a report on your hospitals and let you know how we're serving your residents. So, thanks for this opportunity. We know there's a hospital right across the county line that also serves you in this community, and we're happy that they're taking care of residents in this area as well. But, we're pleased to also serve your residents. And this last year, probably over 4,000 of your residents were seen in one of our facilities or in the Kettering Health Network facility. So, we're pleased to serve them. So, it's a privilege to bring this report to you and to join you in a partnership. You'll see by the numbers we share on that first page that often we are asked how the hospitals are doing. And this is probably the best way to share with you, those whom we are serving and those who are serving those patients. You can see we serve several thousand over the course of 2017. The item I highlight to you is that between the two hospitals, there are over 1,300 who are serving at both, and several of them are residents in your communities. And we're pleased that you're serving them. We're pleased that they're on our staff taking care of our patients. We certainly have seen thousands of patients, and that's an incredible number particularly for Soyn Medical Center in light of, we haven't even finished our seventh year yet of serving the western part of the county. Green Memorial has served for almost 70 years and Soyn for seven years, but we're pleased that thousands are coming to both facilities and giving us opportunity and privilege to serve them. I always point out that you'll note that Green is a 49-bed hospital, and some always remember Green being larger than that. And that's a strategic threshold because for 49 beds, we're allowed to take services out into more rural part of the county. And that allows us, by being a rural hospital, to extend services not normally done, particularly specialty services like cardiology and orthopedics and women's health. So, we have Royal Health Clinics out farther out in the community, and we're going to be adding more to those out in the community and farther beyond. So, both are doing well in that regard. I always say, though, unfortunately, people need us. Quite frankly, we would prefer, and the fire department probably would prefer, not to bring people to the hospital. We'd rather they be well. But, if they're going to need care, we want to be there to take care of them. I list for you below that the services located at both hospitals, and some things are common. Most are distinct between the two hospitals, so that those who need service at one or the other will find it, but they may also have to go to the other for another service. That helps us to keep costs down and to reduce redundancy. But, you can see that Green has more than 100,000 of outpatient served, and that's because of our clinics out farther out in the county and also in Fairborn and Beaver Creek. And we're pleased to offer those services, and some that are distinct and only found at Green are across the county as well. I always point out some recent additions to you. You now see that Soyn is a surgical center of excellence for several surgery lines, and we're the only hospital in Ohio with these designations. It is a high-quality bar, and we think that's important for the western part of the county to have that confidence. We now have a women's health center there also. And recently, we have become a teaching hospital, so we are in our second year of residency. We have 12 residents whom we're training in primary care. And that's strategic because primary care is still deficient in this region, and we need to do what we can to not only train physicians, but hopefully retain them to meet that need here. Because of the number of patients, we are building a second tower. And I give you a picture there so you can see the south tower. Bob, I don't know if you attended that groundbreaking. I know we invited you folks to join us, but if not, that will be located obviously in the south edge of our campus. The left side of that picture is what is highlighted, so that is the new tower, and that will support our surgical line and also a new intensive care unit. The rest of the floors will be shelled out and filled as we need them in the future. At Green, we're now a stroke-ready certified hospital, which is also the first in Ohio to have that designation, and that's important for what I even call little old Green, because that now means that folks who need care within minutes, particularly in that stroke or heart attack, will find that high-quality care at Green Memorial Hospital as well. We've added cardiology. We've also increased our ICU support so that those who are more acute will find care close to home right at Green. And all those are important because they're connected to the issue that we have on the ballot. We are supported by a couple of levies at Green, and this is not coincidental that I also come to you and share this issue as we come to Election Day next Tuesday. But, there are two levies that support Green. The original, which was renewed in 2016, is 70-years-old. This issue, the second, is 25-years-old and has been renewed by the residents of Green County ever since, and very important to these vital services we offer at Green. If you talk about stroke or cardiac care, those are expensive programs, and if we can maintain those in the eastern part of the county, we want to do that, but it takes community support to keep them there for those residents. And I'll remind you, Green saw over 120,000 last year. 23,000 of those are coming through the emergency department. So, important for us to maintain. This levy is solely for Green Memorial Hospital. We have a contract with the Green County Commissioners that requires us to report quarterly on those expenditures and also to account with the county auditor, of course. So, with that, I'm going to close, and thank you for the opportunity to bring this report to you. I think you have something much more important following me, and I'd rather he have the opportunity to have your attention than mine. But, if there's a question I entertain, Mayor, I'm happy to do that as well. Otherwise, thanks for the opportunity.
Counselors, is anyone having questions? For Jeff?
Very thorough report. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Your medical residency program, is that then certified through NIH, National Institutes of Health?
It is certified through the regional planning accreditation that we are under at the hospital. I cannot say that it's NIH-approved, but it's got all the government sanctions on it. I can tell you that much.
Thank you.
And Jeff, then you have, and then the levy is a renewal levy.
It is a renewal. No tax increase.
So, it's, renewal is no tax increase. Is it something every probably five years?
Every five years.
That has come up.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
It's a really important place to have in Green County. I know a lot of people use it.
You probably know someone that uses it with 120,000. That's about 70% of this county that uses Green Memorial Hospital.
So, I appreciate it there.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you very thoroughly.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Jeff. Appreciate it and appreciate everything you've done for the community and the hospital. Moving on, we do have one more item under Mayor's announcement, and these are always good opportunities when we get the opportunity to swear in a new fire officer or lieutenant. So, John, if you'd like to come up? And will you please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, John Nickerson, solemnly swear
solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution
that I will support the Constitution.
of the United States
of the United States.
and the Constitution
and the Constitution.
of the state of Ohio
of the state of Ohio.
and will obey the laws thereof
and will obey the laws thereof.
and that I will
and that I will.
in all respects
in all respects.
uphold and enforce
uphold and enforce.
the provisions of the Charter
provisions of the Charter.
and the ordinances of Belbrook
and the ordinances of Belbrook.
and will faithfully discharge
and will faithfully discharge.
the duties of
the duties of.
the office upon
the office upon.
which I'm about to enter.
which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
And...
(noise)
What's the date?
28th.
28th.
And Chief, do we, does he get to be a...
Yeah, he gets to be...
He gets, yeah, that's all. Come on up. I was assuming that was the case, so...
(laughing).
Sure you do.
There you go.
I would like to thank John and all the other firemen and women for their service. We have a great fire department. I think we still, we have our ISO rating. Is it, I'm looking at the chief now. Is that correct, two? ISO rating two, which is, what percentage, Chief, of cities have an ISO two rating?
Very few.
Very few.
Very few.
So, it's great to have a great fire department, and thank you all for your service. And moving on, public hearing of ordinances. We have none, and feel free to get up and just duck under...
(inaudible).
(laughing). There wasn't much remorse there. Public hearing of ordinances, none. Introduction of ordinances, none. We do have one resolution this evening, Resolution 2018-HH. Mrs. Seager-Lawson.
Resolution number 2018-HH, a resolution authorizing the submittal of applications for federal FAST Act funds through the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission, whereas the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission, MVRPC, has solicited local government entities to submit new transportation projects for funding consideration in the Transportation Alternatives Program, and whereas the city of Belbrook has identified a project which meets all of the requirements of the application, and whereas the city of Belbrook is committed to a timely project development schedule and will commit the necessary resources to support the estimated local cost portion of the project and will submit the project listed below to MVRPC. Number one, pedestrian sidewalk project, estimated local share 204,888. Now, therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby resolves section one, that the resolution shall serve to authorize the transmittal and submittal of applications for the pedestrian sidewalk project to MVRPC for funding consideration in the Transportation Alternatives Program. Section two, the city manager is hereby authorized to sign on behalf of the city, the application for funds as referred to in section one of this resolution. Section three, the city manager is hereby directed and authorized to take or cause to be taken all other actions necessary and proper to secure the funding sought by the application referred to herein, and provide any additional information sought by reviewing agencies during the time the application is under review. The city manager is further directed and authorized to cause compliance with all reporting requirements required by the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission as required as part of the funding process. Section four, upon application approval, the city hereby states its commitment to the local contribution for the project as identified in these applications, including local contribution of costs exceeding the current estimates or subsequent revised estimates as accepted by the MVRPC. Section five, it is hereby found and determined that all formal action of this council concerning and relating to the adoption of this resolution were adopted in an open meeting of the council, and that any and all deliberations of this council and its committees that resulted in such formal action were in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including but not limited to section 121.22 of the Ohio Revise Code. Section six, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforceable. So, we're applying for some funds for sidewalk project.
Yes. So, this is the actual formal resolution. There was a draft resolution in the council packet at the last meeting. So, this is the formal resolution, and it's the full application that was submitted to the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission. So, this is the project that would connect the east and west sidewalks on the south end of Franklin over the Little Sugar Creek Bridge near Little Sugar Creek.
Awesome.
So, what this would do is this would construct a curb from the sidewalk where it, on the west side where it comes out and it just kind of spills onto the road. It would provide a curb buffer from that area all the way up and to the east side of the sidewalk where the first residence is past the Country Place Plaza.
Shopping Center.
Yes, correct. And then it would also provide a raised sidewalk across the bridge, provided within the buffer of the curb there. And then it would also have, include a mid-block crossing that would occur near where the sidewalk starts at the end of Country Place, crossing over to Dots. So, that whole project is in lieu of the previously proposed standalone bridge, which was, with inflationary costs and everything, last time it was looked at, it was going to be approximately one and a half million. So, the total cost for this project is 547,853, and the federal maximum amount for this transportation alternatives grant is 350,000, which we would be going after 342,965. So, the local match would be 204,888, and that would be in five years. Now, there is the opportunity that it could be awarded sooner, but you apply with the intention that the funds wouldn't be available until 2024.
I know we've talked about this. Obviously, it's a very unsafe bridge, and we know everyone's crossing it all the time because it's the only way to get across the river for the most part. So, any questions for our city manager?
It's a great project. Hopefully, we get the money.
I will add that they did submit the list of everybody that had applied for the same funding that we did, and there were seven projects that were submitted, and we were the second highest scoring. So, we do stand a good chance of being awarded this. And the engineer that we used was LJB for this, and they've been wonderful to work with. They went ahead and reached out to OPWC and to ask them whether or not they would be interested in possibly picking up or allowing us to apply for a grant for the match for our local funds through them, and they said that this would be a wonderful project for that. So, the hope is that if we get awarded through this, once the project funding gets a little bit closer, then I can go out for OPWC funds and hopefully it will be 100% covered. So, that's the goal with this.
That's good.
That is good. Hopefully, we get the Ohio Public Work Funds on top of. That'd be great. If there's no other questions, may I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2018-HH?
I move to...
I move that we adopt Resolution number 2018-HH.
May I have a second?
Second.
And roll call.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlester?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Moving on, city manager's report.
Okay. So, we started the budget process with a work session today, so I think that that first work session went pretty well. We've got, let's see, comprehensive plan update is still ongoing. On next Monday, November 5th, at 7:00 PM, there's going to be a community input meeting at the community center, which is located inside the Belbrook-Sugar Creek Parks District offices on Washington Mill Road. That meeting is going to be an open-house style. It's going to be hosted by Green County Regional Planning, and I'll be present as well with some of their staff. And what we're doing is, we're going to have a lot of boards that are set up with information that is contained on them, that's meant to, you know, spark some conversations with the community and gather some input from them. So, we're going to be taking in very specific, you know, comments and questions and ideas from the community to be incorporated into our comprehensive plan. So, we're really looking forward to that. Like I said, it's going to be an open-house style, so it starts at 7:00, and we'll stay until the last person leaves. So, if you need to bring your children with you, you're more than welcome to do that. Stop in for five minutes if you can, you know, take a look at what we've got to present. Send your idea, or write down your ideas and submit them. If you can't make it, you can also submit your ideas via email. So, you're more than welcome to email those to me, and I will make sure to pass those on to Green County Regional Planning as well. So, that'll be next Monday, November 5th, 7:00 PM. We had our asset management plan. Our first draft was completed for our water system, and that's a requirement by the EPA, and that was, that draft was completed by the deadline, so that's good. So, they are just going to be finalizing that. We just had to have the draft done, but it's nearly finished. It just needs a little bit of tweaking. So, that requirement of the Ohio EPA will be complete soon. And then, we had Melissa Jones officially start as our new administrative assistant in finance, and she came to listen tonight on all the goings-on of council. So, she started last week, and she's doing an excellent job. So, we're really glad to have her on. So, it relieves a little bit of pressure in the office. It's been great. So, that's it for me.
Thank you very much. Any questions for our city managers this evening?
Yes.
Committee report, service.
The service report's on.
Safety.
Just like to remind everybody, time change, we'll be coming up here real soon. Check your smoke detectors and CO detectors. Sometimes you overlook those. So, be safe. Check them out.
How about Halloween? Should we be safe there, too?
Should be safe there, too.
So, we do have Halloween on Wednesday. The weather does not look good, so please be careful.
Oh, can I back up to service? Sorry, I thought of something.
Okay.
Don't rake your leaves into the street.
Oh, don't rake your leaves in the street.
We don't have leaf pickup, so the service department would get lots of backup and stuff into the storm service.
Yeah, the culverts will get clogged and
The storm drains.
We'll have to go vacuum them out. So, I'm sorry, Forrest. Anything else?
Oh, it's all good.
Okay. Financing audit?
Mayor, tonight, the much-awaited third-quarter financial update. I think everybody in council's got a copy out in front of them. I mean, essentially, our revenue is pretty much on track with where it needs to be, and we track favorably with 930-17. We're off by about 1.73%, which out of $5 million is very good to be that close on the revenues. Water billing looks to be rather consistent from one year to the next. The quarters go up and down, but we billed 69.8 million gallons third quarter 2018 compared to 67.6 in third quarter 2017, so the water was up a little bit. Now, that's just more households on the spigot or seems like we didn't have as much of a dry summer, so I don't know. I thought it was a little surprise it moved up a bit, but we appreciate the water usage. Again, tap-in fees can continue to be a pretty big item, and I think we're probably about tapped out of tap-in fees right now, so that little act is going to end. On the expenses, it's very difficult to read this because if you look, the biggest item is the capital outlay, and we've got to find someplace to, we talked about it in the other room on the budgets, we've got to find someplace to identify the hillside or the Upper Hillside project because it kind of mucks up all the numbers and makes them all look a little bit misleading. But, if you carve that out for comparison purposes, our expenditures are as close to 930-17, as close to the budget as it can be. So, once again, we're doing a good job with that. The capital looks good. I think we're in good shape on all of our capital expenditures, and I guess the only thing out there that's got any real concern is the Upper Hillside Water Main Project, and we need to find an invoice from Brackney. And we've already paid the final not to exceed an invoice to the engineering firm, I presume, or...
I think that we're still waiting on the final.
But, we know what the amount is. That's what we got.
Yes.
But, we do have some excess cushion on the Brackney piece that we could favorably impact the project. So, with that, I'll motion that we have the acceptance of the third-quarter financial update.
May I have a motion to accept the third-quarter financial updates?
Move to do that.
And so, you're...
I made the motion.
So, second. And roll call.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlester?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes.
So, I guess one thing I didn't ask anybody, any comments or any questions on it. We didn't have any discussion. I'll just watch out for that.
That's pretty straightforward.
Yep.
Okay.
Hopefully, by us approving that, we'll keep the state auditors happy.
That we will. And also, I can report that we've got a final draft of the audit report. So, we'll work that toward conclusion as soon as we can, and as always, it comes in very close to November, even though it's always promised in June, July. So, once again, we're probably a day later than last year.
One thing related to that is I was asked by the auditors if we wanted to hold the post-audit meeting, and then if we do, we need to determine a date for that. So, something that needs to be thought about.
I think we'd like to do it, and I'll just leave it up to the committee to find a date that makes sense.
Okay.
We'll get back to you after the meeting, let you know a date.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Schweller?
That's all for tonight, Mayor.
Community affairs.
I don't have anything tonight.
Old business, nothing. New business. We need to talk a little bit about hiring a replacement, so to speak, for our city manager, so she doesn't have to be the clerk also. I guess my idea would be just to email us all the resumes, and we can all go through and sort of determine.
Very specific position.
Yes, we've posted, and we have nine applicants. So, I can filter those out to council, and then we can decide.
Which ones we want to interview.
You all can decide which way you want to go from there.
Okay.
Does that sound good?
Yeah. Okay, yep. I'll get them out.
Open discussion. I'm going to start out in our audience because I know she's been waiting. I'm throwing you in the spot. I would have put you in Mayor's announcements, but I wasn't exactly sure what the topic of discussion was. But, if you could please introduce yourself and...
Good evening. And I know that we've met Mayor Baird, and I know I look...
I know. I'm trying to figure out where.
We, at the chamber.
Okay.
I'm friends with Chris, and I am Lauren Bowen from the State Treasurers Office, and so I pass through your community quite often for different reasons. And I have to confess that this evening, it was really last minute for me to be able to visit you. I had another school meeting canceled, and I've been meaning to circle around to all of you. So, I thought it aligned perfectly that I could come out and visit. So, I really appreciate you having me. Our genuine hope is to circle around to every local government across the whole state. There's 3,962 local governments, so we're hoping to have 3,962 conversations about this. And essentially, what we're trying to do is coordinate an effort to make public records available online in communities. It's an effort to digitize expenditure items so that the reports that are generated by the accounting systems, we get feedback at the state level and among, you know, community members here at the local government level, that those can be quite a bit hard to read and understand and digest. So, it was our hope that throughout these local governments that we could digitize these expenditure items, put them on a platform where you can search for how much the city spent on road salt, and in a second's time, you'd understand exactly that amount. And you can search for computers, vendors, Verizon, and so it's just an easier way to sift through what it is that local governments are spending their money on. We, of course, did this at the state level across every state agency, stretching back to 2008, and we have over half a trillion dollars posted on there down to the very last dime of how state tax dollars are spent. And that's really what prompted us to try to circle around to local governments and accomplish the same end alongside of them, mainly because, you know, in the days when computers fit people's pockets, we really believed that we should be leveraging technology to make it more convenient for people to access public information and then, at the same time, make it easier to read. So, it's just kind of our hope to get your thoughts on this. I know that we've been, over the past three years, really circling around to communities, and I know we've had a previous discussion about this, but we're kind of trying to pick the conversation back up to see if it wouldn't be something we could do.
And I guess I can sort of start and sort of
Sure.
more Mike's bailiwick a little bit. We have talked about it. I don't think we have any direct issues with it. Our biggest issues are the manpower and the potential cost to the city. I understand there's essentially two levels, lack of a better term, of where we can just upload the files or searchable. Is it still called the checkbook?
It is still called the Ohio checkbook.
Ohio checkbook. Our biggest issue is figuring out... Our biggest issue is figuring out, and we were going through transition on one of our systems, correct?
We just recently upgraded the finance system, but we wanted to wait till we get that upgraded in place before we were going to try to put another patch or another ad hoc piece of software over the top of it.
That makes sense. Do you mind me asking what accounting system that is?
Springbrook.
Okay.
And we had before something that was tremendously old, so I mean, it was almost impossible to think about that doing it now. And I guess, Melissa, we'd have to interact with Springbrook to find out if they've got that capability. But one of the things I'd like to look at is, give us a couple of state or cities that do have the state, the state checkbook already implemented.
Sure.
So, we can go out and look at it, because I've looked at other cities that don't necessarily have the state checkbook because I think the state checkbook is free, is that correct?
It is free.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I have not looked at that specifically, but I've looked at the other ones, and I found it to be kind of cumbersome.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure if it's going to help us or not, and my biggest concern is our finance department is also our city manager department.
Yes. I've wondered about this evening.
And I, I get concerned that I don't want someone to say, hey, I'm looking at the open checkbook, and I'm trying to find how many
Yep.
pounds or tons of salt you bought last year, and I can't find it, and now where do I need to look? And I just don't want to get into a lot of that, not that I don't want the citizens to understand, but I, I don't want to add any more complication or confusion to our staffing levels.
And, and Mike's chair of our finance, uh, that's why I sort of went to him.
Sure.
And, and I think it's something we can look at again. I think the other issue is that we're not like one of the bigger cities, meaning that if someone wants a records request, we typically, in the past, I know you probably haven't had to double it much, but it's going to be that day or the next.
Yeah, most certainly.
So, I think that's our concerns, manpower, maintaining it is the other concern, how much time and all that.
Definitely.
In some cities, Bob, have used the administrative person of the finance group as the person that citizens can call and say, hey, can you direct me how to find this?
Right.
We just don't have that capability right now with our staff, and I just don't want to get us into a
I totally appreciate that, and I wouldn't want it to cause a big to-do and make it more complicated on you, because I know that even if it's a smaller city, being a city manager is genuinely very difficult. So, being a finance director on top of that, um, I wouldn't, I've never met anybody that's actually done both in a city this
We've got a new member coming on board on staff too today.
We, we are one of the very rare cities, very rare cities of size that does do that.
But if you could give us some examples, and then even call them and say, hey, how do you like it? What kind of problems do you have with it?
Definitely. I, I brought my list here, um, and then let me make one quick point before I rattle that off. We on our end will do all the investigating, i- if there's a genuine interest that needs to be done to figure out how we can, in a very few minutes' worth of time, I'll work with your accounting system to do this. For instance, mostly townships, which you have quite a few in the county signed up, you know, it takes them a minute, because UAN takes care of it for them. When they check a box in the system, it's all handled. You know, SSI, we've got that troubleshooted so that it takes nothing more than a minute. Um, your accounting system, I have to confess, we would have to do, but we would do that on our end. That wouldn't be a burden we put on you. Um, we've been known to call accounting systems and say, this is what we're trying to do, and we need it to be done in a minute's time, so that it's streamlined and, and it's more of a data transfer rather than, um, you know, manually putting in data. But, so if there is an interest, we'll call your accounting system and figure it out. One more, not another thing on your plate, I promise.
Supposedly not today, right?
Yeah, not today. And then, so in, in Green County here, we have Beaver Creek Township, the City of Beaver Creek. We have, uh, the county. We have Xenia, Jamestown, Bowersville, Spring Valley, Caesar's Creek, uh, that's going to be township. Um, Cedarville Township, um, Cedarville Village is still unhandwritten records, so, um, is it New Jasper? I can't read my writing. Yeah, New Jasper, uh, Spring Valley, Bath Township, Miami and Ross.
Didn't hear, Shirk Creek, were they not?
Oh, Sugar Creek Township is on. I'm sorry, yes, they were one, they were the first entities signed up in the state, yeah.
You can probably get with Berry and see how that's went and, um, go from there. I don't think it's anything we've ever been opposed of. We were more just concerned of, well, we know we weren't opposed to, it's more the issue of cost, manpower.
And, and
Or woman power in this case.
Yeah, woman power. Um, I, let me talk to my office about the Springbrook accounting system. And let me see if we can do that in a very easy manner, and then I will report back to you in an email. If it's going to be hard, I will be honest with you about that. If it's going to be easy, I will also say, you know, this is all we have to do in the system. Click here, click there, and it's done. So, let me do that on my end. I honestly didn't realize you had that accounting system. We're used to SSI, CMI. I think Tyler Munis is another one, but you're, that one's new.
I think we looked at SSI as one of the, uh, competitors or whatever that
Yeah. And then another one is Bucks, um, so, but you're, that, this one is a new one to me. So, I will do my research and get back with you. And then maybe at that point, you'll have a better idea if it's something we can do together. And I'll leave my card. If you want to call me anytime, please do, and I really appreciate you all. Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
No, no, thanks for coming out. We could have put you in the, uh, Well, thank you very much, and, uh, we will get back to you.
Wonderful, that sounds good.
So, open discussion.
I don't have anything tonight, Mayor.
Forrest?
Nothing, Mayor.
Nothing, Mayor.
All of mine is related to sports.
I was waiting on that.
I want to say congratulations to the high school football team for having an undefeated season. They're 10-0, officially finished the season, um, without a single loss. So, they are in the first playoff, uh, the first playoff game is, uh, this Friday. It's at home. Uh, they're playing a, um, uh, a school called Sheridan. I've never heard of them. I think they're, um, I think they are east of Columbus, is what I understand. Um, I also want to say congratulations to the high school girls soccer, which is back-to-back district champions. Um, I also want to say congratulations to the high school girls volleyball, which was a district runner-ups. Um, I also want to say congratulations to the high school girls cross-country regional champs. Um, I also understand that the Belbrook Band took first place in the trip, AAA, is that what they call it?
Triple A.
Triple A. So, congratulations to them as well, so, yay.
That's awesome. We do have some awesome, awesome athletes in this community, so.
It has been great, and I also like the fact that Trotwood and Alter are on the other side of the bracket.
And I do want to say thank you to, um, the police because they, they did a, um,
They've been having a good time here lately.
They've been giving police escorts through town for whoever won any sports, and so it's really been awesome, and the kids really love it.
The kids like it.
And the community really enjoys it as well. Um, one last thing, uh, which is not related to sports, is please everyone go out and vote next Tuesday, right?
That's correct. There are a lot of, um, a lot of offices up, uh, one issue, there's also a number of renewals, and so there, so, as I always say, do your homework and go vote. There's definitely a lot to vote on this time, everything from state level, county level, um, the local level. We don't have anything. We don't have anything. I don't think Township has anything, so.
Fire levy, did you?
Township does have a fire levy.
It's a renewal.
Renewal, okay, so, um, with that, Mr. Schweller?
I would just like to comment to encourage everybody to exercise their right to get out and vote, and this is, again, is no Belbrook-specific items on the agenda, on the, the ballot, but we certainly have some, uh, very important elections and people to, to, to elect, as well as some important issues to vote on, so.
I agree.
Get out the vote.
And I don't think I have anything. Be careful on Halloween. We do have a, our next city council meeting is, or what's the?
It's Tuesday.
It's Tuesday, November 13th?
Cause Veterans Day would be Monday, the 12th.
Because of Veterans Day. So, our next city council meeting will be Tuesday, November 13th. We also have our comprehensive plan, and what are we calling that again?
Community vision.
Community vision, um, and that's next Monday at the Community Center. With that, is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to get up this evening? I see no one saying it. Does any, any member on council have any other business to come before us at this city council meeting? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.